Welcome back to the Granberry City Hall. It is January the 7th, 2020. We're here at 6:00 PM, City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas. The Granberry City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Ben Hubener, the Associate Pastor of Outreach Acton United Methodist Church, to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own Greg Corgan. All rise, please.
Would you pray with me? Holy gracious God, we give you thanks for this day. God, we give you thanks for this city, for this state, and for this nation. God, for all of the good things that you are doing through each of those areas. God, for all the ways that you are leading us. I mean, God, for the ways that you are with the people in this room right now. God, I thank you for your presence here. God, I thank you that you are leading your civil servants in the ways that they should go. So, God, I pray that as they are meeting tonight, as they are discussing the work of this city, that, God, that they would open their hearts to you, that open their minds to you, that those who would speak would speak with clarity, and, God, that they would say those things that lead us all closer and closer to you. God, I pray for our nation, for our president, for our first responders, and for all of those people who are in harm's way tonight. And we pray these things in the mighty and powerful name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas Honor.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state in the God, one indivisible.
Well, it looks like we're starting the new year off with a bang. You know, I don't know how many people participated in the polar plunge, not the polar plunge, I'm sorry, the goosebump jump. That was a great event. If you missed out, there's going to be opportunity next year. Tammy, thank you for that. You're here, right, Tammy? I thought, yes, she is. There she is, yeah. But that was a great way to, yeah, give her a hand. That was a, that was a great way to start out the year, and we're going to be doing a lot more of those things in the winter months just to, you know, bring people here and to give something for the community to do and stuff. So, that's a, that was a great start off. We're going to start the day, the meeting off tonight with a presentation. The presentation is by, with J.C. Campbell honoring the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department for 113 years of service to the city of Granberry and Hood County. That's from January 2007, 1907, I'm sorry, to January 2020. I'm going to get these dates right. So, J.C.?
Mr. Mayor, Council Lady, Councilman, and Mr. City Manager, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to visit with you tonight for a few minutes. As most of you know, the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department is very important to me, but also, just as equally important, is Hood County, the Granberry ISD, and the city of Granberry. You are aware of the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department personnel seated in the audience tonight. Would all the firemen please stand up? The present day firemen. That's all right. Thank you.
Greg Corgan.
They were here because I asked them to join us for the purpose of celebrating today, the 7th day of January 2020. Also in attendance are those who were volunteer firemen years ago when the city was much smaller and not as many fire departments as we now have to cover our city and our county. Would all the oldies guys stand up? That's O-L-E. Okay, this is the 113th year plus seven days anniversary of the GVFD. I'm so proud of what this department has done since its inception, the way it has provided services to all citizens of the city of Granberry and of Hood County. Located on the base of the Jim Burksma Fireman statue at Memorial Lane, you will find engraved over 400 names of firemen who served the first 100 years of the life of this department's existence. And you will find these firemen's names on the statue base. Stand up again, guys. Stand up again. Their names are on that statue down there. Quite a dedicated list of volunteer firemen, I must say. We now have in our fire department female firefighters who are putting on their bunker gear and joining in to protect our communities. Ladies, please rely on us. We have a lady, we got two ladies. We do. I am grateful to each and every member of this department for their dedication. Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, would you please join me at the podium for a few minutes?
What do you think?
You better.
Whatever J.C. said.
We got you outnumbered tonight. No, 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 no. Stand right out there in the front. Now, this is the way you make everybody else do it, sir. Okay, Joel and John, it gives me great pleasure, it gives me great pleasure to present to you both for the city of Granberry an exact replica only in a smaller size of the fireman statue located in Memorial Lane. The nameplate on the statue reads, "Presented to the city of Granberry. This statue is given in honor of the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department, celebrating the 113th year of serving this city and its citizens since 1 January 1907. Presented this date to Mayor Nen Hewlett and City Manager Chris Kaufman by J.C., John, Joel, Jerry, and then Joel, 7 January 2020." Now, on your next visit to the fireman's memorial, please note that the fireman's left hand is pulling his tie down. I asked the late sculptor Art Levins to make the statue that way because the fire chief at that time was Kelton Connor, Kelton Stan. Kelton, Kelton was an attorney, and later he was a Hood County attorney. When the fire whistle would sound, Kelton would leave his law office in coat and tie and would go to fight the fire, without his coat, of course. And when returning back to the station, he would take the time then to pull at his tie to be more comfortable. Getting to the fire in a timely manner is the most important in saving property and lives. Thank you all elected officials for your and the city's support for this volunteer fire department. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. This is the first time I've got to tell the mayor and the city manager what to do. So, this is pretty good. Okay, now, you guys, the fire department knows that the city takes care of us pretty good, the fire department. And they've just, I think last year in their budget, they allocated a little over $2 million for two new trucks, a ladder truck, that's what I call it, maybe an aero truck or something. But some kind of truck's got a ladder on it or some way to get up. And I think we have a pumper. I'm not sure if that's right or not, but that's what they do. So, what we want to do tonight is we want to reciprocate, and we want to, we want to present you guys for the city, a truck, too. Yeah, a truck, fire truck. Look at this. Okay?
Can I get it? Not him?
Well, I don't know. You can see who it is. And what goes along, what goes along?
Come on down here, Council. Come on down here.
Yeah, the council, come on down. What goes along with this is this sign that says, "This white fire truck presents, presented to the city of Granberry from the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department. This date, 7 January 2020." So, now, you, we've done our tour, this, we've done our part of it now. All you got to do is raise more money. But we thank you so very much for this.
Would it be okay, would it be okay if the firefighters were here tonight and they had a charge, could everybody sign?
Well, we talked about that, but we thought that we would not mess it up. You know, but if that's what the city wants, I think we can, but it's a, okay. Well, that's, before you, before you, the council, council can go ahead and be seated. I want the other two to sit. No, I tell you, it's all right, just stay right here. All right, we've got one more thing for you. We have one more thing for you. You know, about two weeks, what? That's all right, you don't worry about it tonight. About two weeks ago, we had a funeral, and we lost one of our firemen, Alan Brown, and his nickname was Weeby. And if you don't know where he got the name Weeby, it's because when we were fighting fire, he and I were fighting fire, he would go 10-8. In other words, he was on the way to the fire, and he'd say, "Weeby 10-8. Weeby 10-8." He said, "Weeby." So, Weeby stuck, and that's what he was. But we lost him. He was a good firefighter. This fire department that you see back here voted him the Fireman of the Year. Alan didn't fight fire, but they loved what he stood for, and they loved his attitude, and he came to all of the meetings. He couldn't fight it, but he was fighting a losing battle. But his gift for being Firefighter of the Year was an axe. Where's the axe? Okay, can you go get it? We need it up here. Yeah. But this is, this is an axe that was given to them, given to him by this fireman. We also had the firefighter, the rookie firefighter, where's the rookie firefighter? Stand up. Okay, he was the rookie firefighter of this, of this past year. And what we would like to do is ask the city if you would take this axe and you would put it in the case back there so everybody could see it, because it's either that his wife asked that we do this, and so that's what we figured would be a good thing to do. So, now, you've got something to put on top of the case back here along with the two police department, police cars. Now, you got the white fire truck.
Yeah, I noticed that real quick.
Well, you know, whenever, whenever we have a rookie come in or someone wants to join, the first question they ask them is, "What color's fire trucks?" And if it isn't white, they don't get in, so. No, I'm teasing there, but we have some, we have some honorary firemen, too, here tonight with honorary firefighter, Juliette Yu and Trish. And we got any more here? Okay, these are honorary firefighters we got. But, but the fire department does appreciate what the city does for it, and you've, you've helped the fire department come a long way. And hopefully, Grant will be back with the, with the axe soon. I know you want to go home, but...
So, should we just stay here?
Unless you want to lay down, it doesn't matter. Yeah. Here he comes.
Well, I'm going to echo a little bit of what J.C. said, but we are so proud of our in it. They don't only fight fires, but they get active in the community, they do a lot of things for the community, they, they're a part of fundraisers, they're a part of events, and, you know, it's just good to have a group of people like the firefighters here that are passionate enough to do what they do. So, I want to personally thank you, along with the council, thank you for what you do for the city of Granberry. We really appreciate it. And don't forget to sign that tar up there. Sure was. But I kind of wondered why Chris wore a tie today, though.
He's been shaming me into it. He wore a tie to the beach Saturday. I thought, okay, that's my son.
Well, once again, thank you, J.C., for that presentation. That was, that was really, really great. We're now going to go into our citizens' comments on the matters not on the agenda. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes to speak on this. I'm not going to go through all that, but we do have one speaker. Bob Pennell has signed up to speak. Bob?
Thank you. As you said, my name's Bob Pennell. I live at 403 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas. I'm mayor, city manager, city council members. I'm here tonight as a member of the, as a board member.
I'll pull that mic up just a little bit there. Good. There you go.
I'm here as a board member of the Friends of Memorial Lane, and on January the 9th, 2020, partnering organizations in support of law enforcement officers nationwide will promote National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, called LEAD. In light of recent negativity directed towards law enforcement nationally, there is a need to show law enforcement officers that our citizens recognize the difficult and sometimes impossible career they've chosen in public service to us all. This Thursday, January the 9th, at 11:30 AM, Friends of Memorial Lane joined forces with our loyal local Walmart to deliver and serve lunch to 60 at the sheriffs' and state troopers' offices, 30 to our police department, 18 to the constables' and staff offices, and 10 to the Brazos River Authority. Friends of Memorial Lane invite all citizens in Granberry and Hood County to join us in supporting our law enforcement officers and to thank them for their service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And that's a, that's another great program after the Memorial Lane and the group of people that are out there, they do so much for the, for the community. So, we want to thank them for what they do also. Now, we're going to move into our public comments on agenda items that are not public hearing agenda items. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted for this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed on the public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. So, does anybody in the public wish to make any comments on any of the items? Hearing none, we're going to our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight has three items on there, I'm sorry, two items. The first one being considered approving city council meeting minutes of December 17, 2019, regular meeting. The second one being considered adopting resolution number 2001, authorizing the submission of a recreational trails grant application and designating the city manager as the authorized representative. On that item there, folks, you've seen where we're doing the, I think it's Acton Middle School, Acton Middle School, where we're getting the grant to continue to do their, I think it's a walking trail out there. So, Council, you had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there that you want to discuss or make changes to or pull off of the consent agenda at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda, the first item being a public hearing considering approving a request of ERA and Holly Roach for a preliminary plat. I'm going to call upon Scott Sopchek to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please, Scott.
What we have is an application for a preliminary plat to take roughly 12 acres and to create two lots of record out of property currently in survey. This particular piece of property is located just to the northeast of Apes Landing, off 51, east of 51. You can see the general location, and it's fronting Reed Road just to the northeast of Apes Landing. It's in the ETJ. Again, it's a little over 12 acres, currently has residents on the site. You can see the existing residents bounded in the square. What's being proposed is for an animal boarding and grooming facility. The owners of the residence want to have animal boarding and grooming there on the site in the county. There is the plat being presented. You can see the configuration of Lot 1 and Lot 2, Lot 2 being the lot to the east, and Lot 1 being the larger lot that kind of fingers down toward the south, both fronting Reed The approximate location of the nearest water and sewer mains to this particular property is over 1,000 feet away, a little over 1,000 feet away to Apes Landing. As such, we have various requests by the applicant being submitted. We have 1 to 39 and 46 to not extend an 8-inch central water line through the site's frontage. And to give you a little previous background, this is the property where the city recently issued the water well permit. So, you can see the copy of the water well permit signed by the mayor and Rick Crown over to the Public Works Director post council action. We also have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend an 8-inch central sewer line. Again, the central sewer line, nearest location is over 1,000 feet away. We have two service units demand on 12 acres. We have correspondence in your agenda packet, and you can see it here from Jeannie Stacks of the county saying that the proposed lot can be served under the county standards for septic system. Public notices were mailed, none was required. Your city engineer recommendation memorandum is in your agenda packet included. She recommends approval of the four variances, the one to water and sewer, the street expansion to an urban facility, and street lights. And that was presented to your planning and zoning commission, and your planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the variances and preliminary plat as presented by the applicant. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns from, to the staff on this item? Scott, should we break that down separate with the variances and the plat, or can we just combine them together?
Mayor, if you would, vote on the variances first.
Sure. We're hearing none, Council. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said variances as presented.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the variances? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we will entertain the motion to approve the said preliminary plat as presented. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Say it.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the preliminary plat? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Preliminary plat is approved. Thank you, Council. Next item is, we're going to look at four and five together. We got a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 2001 as number four, and number five is a public hearing considering approving a request of Granberry 491 LSC to replat. And I'm going to call upon Scott Sopchek once again to give a staff report on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is the old Kroger site where the Tuesday morning and the Ulta facility is. This was set up as a planned development, as a part of our proposal to refresh the building. We got the main principal building dolled up and filled in for the most part. There's some out parcels as a part of this PD proposal on the front US 377. So, the PD amendment seeks to address Lot 3, which is the northeasternmost out parcel of the intersection of 377 and Harbor Lakes extension through the site. That being the area kind of denoted in red highlight here. So, what's being proposed for this particular out parcel or Lot number three is for a dental office. What was conceptually being planned out was possibly for retail restaurant, and because the dental office is coming in, they need more parking to support this. Well, the principal lot where the main building is in the back has additional parking spaces to give. So, the long and short of it, what's being done here is to absorb some of that area through that finger for the additional parking to support the dental office, and it also does two little minor design things. One, it increases the side yard setback, the side yard being the street side yard along Harbor Lakes, which is 30 feet per commercial, way back when we gave a 25-foot encroachment into it. They're reducing, they're increasing that from 5 to 5.4, so they're giving us a little more open space on that street side yard. And then, they're also asking to reduce the total front yard landscaping from 29.1 to 19%. That's not the total landscaping. We have a, we have a requirement that says 40% of the 20% has to be in the front yard. So, what they're doing is impacting that front yard setback, the 40% of the 20%. And I'll go to a landscaping slide here a little later, and you can see a lot of that landscaping is toward the back and to the interior of the property. The other thing that we, that is a part of this motion, Mayor, is not only to adopt the zoning ordinance, the adoption ordinance, but we also need to execute the PD restriction. And that PD restriction ties down these building elevations because it is a PD, the applicant's proposing to use a combination of brick and stone, and this is one of those zoning ordinance amendments that we've done to address those legislative updates. So, if they're going to come in and present these nice stone elevations or brick elevations, we're saying, okay, you need to execute a PD restriction, and we'll file that at the county clerk's office. It'll be discovery tied to the property, and it'll be tied to some of the development processes of the city. So, these are the elevations of the building that are going to be roped in or tied into that PD restriction. There is the landscaping. You can see some of the landscaping kind of looping around the back. You can see some of the landscaping kind of looping around the back, but again, that doesn't affect the 40 percent of the 20 percent. And that in effect is it. The only side comment that I will add is on the zoning for the adoption of the ordinance, we did not have that executed PD restriction at the time of the PD hearing. So, that's why you see a motion by P and Z for a conditional approval. That condition has since been met. They filed that signed PD restriction with us. We have the signed copy that's been vetted by their attorney. So, that condition can be taken off. Staff now recommends approval of the adoption ordinance establishing the PD and executing the PD restriction on the zoning case, agenda item number four. On agenda item number five, go back to the plat here. What's being proposed is again, just to, this is what's recorded at the courthouse. You can see that lot, that lot on the northeast corner doesn't have that finger. So, what the plat amendment does is to change that, in essence, create that little finger. See if I can get to the plat here. There we go. So, the lot line extension where it kind of fingers out is it addresses that to absorb the parking along the frontage of 377 to accommodate the dental office. One thing that our city engineer caught was on the replat, the easements that are defined that are currently filed volume and page on this particular plat, they don't show both sides of the delineated easements that should be existing. It's just a clerical oversight, so that's why you see the conditional approval of the plat application. So, that hasn't changed from your planning and zoning commission motion. We sent notices out, eight to adjoining property owners within the 200-foot. Notice was always also published in the paper. As of this night, we have not received any correspondence in opposition or support. Your planning and zoning commission recommends, of course, conditional approval of the rezoning. We can take that condition off, so we're recommending approval of the rezoning and execution of the PD restriction. On the plat, we're recommending still conditional approval of the replat with easements that need to be correctly depicted on the Mylar when presented to the city. Mayor, that's it. I'll be happy to entertain any motions. If we can, just for clarity, we can break this up. We have kind of three different applications here or three different requests. We have the adoption ordinance, we have the PD restriction, and then we have the plat application.
Okay.
There are no variances associated with the plat.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to the public on item number four and five. Anybody in the public wish to speak on either one of these items? Hearing none, I'll close the pub, I'm sorry, we do have one, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Good evening. Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, 1903, Central Drive, Bedford, Texas. I'm just the applicant here. I wanted to let you guys know we're here. Scott did a great job of giving a presentation. I think everybody, most everybody's familiar with what we've been doing out there. This is the second phase of it. We're excited to bring that in. Everything that Scott said is great on the, just to let you guys know, we know it's conditional approval. We have submitted the revised plat to staff, but we didn't really give them enough time. We submitted it yesterday. So, we didn't give them enough time to address that, but we have corrected the easements that were found on there. And if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
What was the, what were the corrections to the easement, do you know?
Just, so we had an easement drawn and we showed one side, but we didn't show the other. It just, it was a drafting error where a line got taken off the drawing accidentally. It wasn't intentional. And so, we just corrected that and we have both of those easements shown on there to correct an easement. There wasn't anything that changed, anything that was updated. It was just a line got left off when we were drawing it.
Is anybody else in public wish to speak on this item? I'm going to have the applicant kind of stay up there for a while, if you would, please. Couple of questions. Is there going to be any loading zones on the back side of that building there? I mean, I know it's a dental office, right?
Yeah, there's a dental office.
Because it's going to face the parking lot part of it, so, and Scott, this might be for you. Does that, does that complement the required parking and landscaping that is necessary for just that standalone building right there?
So, what they're asking for is specific to pad three, only it doesn't change the other lots and the other PD restrictions. So, when you look at our PD setup, there's a table of approved variances for each lot or pad site. And what this PD restriction only impacts is pad three. So, for example, going to the landscaping, it alters the landscaping, it doesn't alter it for the rest of the balance of the PD. I hope that answers your question.
Well, does it, I mean, and that's an overall, it's a, the whole landscaping stuff's done by one person. It's not done individually like, say, Tuesday morning and the other ones there, they don't do, it's all done by the developer, I guess you might say, or is that?
So, it's.
I guess what I'm saying is that, is the other occupant, like, let's say Tuesday morning, they're okay with what's going on in there because?
So, just to kind of open the book up on the development process is that there's a covenants and restrictions that's kind of a developer's agreement between the owners. And there's actually restrictions on what can and can't go in in the front of those pads.
Right.
That was negotiated before Tuesday morning and all the folks in the back that were going in there. There was also visibility triangles that we worked with them on, making sure where the, you know, where the buildings out front could go to make sure where the big parking lot is, that after they did that, we didn't go try to put a building and block right in front of them. So, all those groups that were back there, part of the real estate dealings when we worked with them to bring them in in the beginning, they were made aware that, hey, here's the out parcels, here's the overall site plan. We changed their use from a retail to a restaurant. We've since gone and on the private side, doesn't have anything to do with this here, but we went in on our development agreements and got approvals from the parties that were, that had the rights to approve those, because not everybody there has the rights to do that, but the anchors that we would consider like a Tuesday morning and some of the larger tenants there, Ulta, those did have the rights to do that and we have worked that out with them to where that is good. And then, kind of to finish on the loading zone and everything, on that front out parcel, it is just a dentist office, so they don't have big trucks bringing in all their stuff. It's usually a small delivery van or something like that that they can go just pull theirs in and they can park in a normal parking stall. There's not a, there's not a need to have the big 18-wheeler like we do. We've got multiple loading docks and everything on the backside of the old Kroger building for some of the larger folks that get those big deliveries in. None of that's changing, none of that circulation's changing. It's just, it's just that lot three that we're here to kind of bring on for phase two.
Okay, thank you. Council, is there any more questions for the staff or the applicant at this time?
So, Scott, we're just extending that, I'm just trying to get clarification. We're just extending that lot line out to meet that other pad line, lot line, is that correct?
On the plat, correct.
Okay. And tell me again, what was that for? Why meet it? Why?
Because the medical office facilities require a one to 150 parking requirement.
And those, those extra parkings will meet that?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the center lot had additional spaces to give. They were overparked, so they had an abundance beyond the 100 percent requirement. So, they were between 100 and 125, so they could get the dental office some additional parking without throwing themselves into non-compliance.
Okay. Thank you. And we're not going to have any restrictions on the fire lane easements or anything, that's not going to be affected, is it?
No, sir.
Okay.
Council, any more questions or concerns on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
So, and this is less to do with this specific property, but it looks as though we've got a, we're going to restrict it as far as parking spaces overall. We're having to, we're having to move lines just to accommodate our requirements. And I know we've asked for it in the past, but I'm hoping that staff, we can start looking at landscape requirements and those type of things, because anybody that had a business and certainly a commercial property in this town when we had the drought, it's hard to keep these things alive when the city says you have to have them, you plant them, and we can't water them because we have no water. I'm hoping that we can kind of evolve into something that they're doing west of here in Arizona and west Texas where water is really at a shortage. So, this is mainly not a statement for you, but just saying going forward, I think we need to relook at this, and we've asked for this before, but look at this ordinance and maybe work on that so we can look past this project, and I love this project, but look past this and I think be a little smarter in our requirements. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Council, any more discussion on this item? Thank you, sir. Council, like Scott said, this will be a three-part and we'll go ahead and vote on these individually. The first one being to recommend the conditional approval. And at this time, since some of those have been, since they have been taken care of, I'll entertain a motion to use option one to approve the development plan as presented by the applicant and to approve the ordinance amending the planned development district.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. And the next one, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll have a, we'll entertain a motion to, to vote for the, or to approve the PD restriction per the zoning ordinance. For the zoning ordinance, section 6.1 FE shall be submitted and executed prior to the signing and filing of the adoption ordinance for the record.
Be to execute the PD restriction.
Okay. So, looking for that motion.
So moved.
I got that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move down to item number five, which is the replat. Council, any more discussion to the staff or the applicant on the replat portion of Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to recommend the, recommend the conditional approval by, recommend the conditional approval for the said replat.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 2002. Scott, I think that's yours also, if you'd give us a staff report on that, please.
Be happy to, Mayor, council. What this is, is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Currently, our zoning ordinance allows for one model home per, model sales office per residential subdivision. The key underscore there is sales office. It's not just a spec home that somebody wants to build. These are some of these homes that the builder wants to put in and the law put a sales office in the garage and offer plans and different layouts of the models of homes. And we'll have a representative from the home builder there on site to help address questions for walk-through traffic. So, we looked at, because we had only a cap of one, we looked at other cities to what they were doing. We vetted about, I would say approximately 10 other cities around the metroplex. And what was presented to your planning and zoning commission was something that we found was in, in the more meant to allow, higher allowance range of allowing model home sales offices, one for each 10 lots, but no more than four per phase. So, if you have four different home builders, you can have at least, you know, the developer could come in and say, okay, builder X and Y and Z, you can have each a different model and you can have your sales office there. And then, when you go to a subsequent phase, it kind of kicks it over again. You can have an additional cap of four. We also saw that some of these model ordinances had a kind of a phase-out period when the, and most of them had around 80 to 90 percent, so we use 90 percent. When the phase is 90 percent built out, then they work with the building department to phase these out. Their model homes occupancy is revoked or however they manage the paperwork and then they have to turn the home over to a general purpose sales in order for residential habitation. So, this was presented to your planning and zoning commission. Your planning and zoning commission approved the zoning ordinance amendment to allow for these model home sales offices by a vote of five a's, zero nays. Mr. Mayor, council, be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public, the hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any questions or concerns with staff? I will note out, council, that the key to this is the number of model, model home sales office, there'll be one model home sales office per 10 lots. And that, the key to that is the model home sales office, so there has to be somebody occupying them, right? Just can't build some model home for people can walk around and look at, right, Scott?
Right. So, it's, the key element is a sales office.
Okay.
Where they can come in and offer their wares with a live person there.
Mayor?
Councilperson Rodriguez. Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Scott, what if they have, you know, eight lots and three phases? What do you do in those cases?
So.
Are you going to be restricted? Are you going to be saying, hey, sorry, you don't have 10 lots and sorry?
Yeah. I mean, that's the way the ordinance is written. So, the key is to have, you know, not to have one or two, four or five residential lots proliferated with three or four sales offices, you know? Kind of, and talking to other people in the planning profession, there needs to be a certain kind of saturation of available lots to have the builder's sales office there. And so, that's, that's what we patterned the zoning ordinance changed after.
And during your research, did you see that 10 was, I guess, average number of lots or is that typical? Is that normal? I mean, I didn't see the research you did, but what gave you the 10 lots?
I would have to go back and look at the paperwork, but we also did some follow-up calls, where I did some follow-up calls and they, the planning directors in essence said, we typically don't do these sales offices for small residential subdivisions. So, and dialoguing with these people, they said, you know, what we cobbled together was, okay, once we get past 10, it's starting, it's starting to get some traction as a residential community. And if, if 10 doesn't work for the development community, you know, we can, this is a starting point.
I might just add something.
Chris?
I talked to the folks that are going to be building in Saratoga and they're taking up all of phase one and that's 167 lots and they're planning on only utilizing one sales, one model sales home. So, that was kind of good news to me. I was afraid they were going to need six or seven and we were going to have to, you know, turn them back, but they said all they need is one. They'll, they build all spec homes, so they'll build a house and it'll be available for sale and, you know, somebody will take them through and show it to them, but that won't be a sales home, that'll be an actual house for sale. So, the sales home is, the model sales home would be one where they have a office set up in there, maybe in the garage. It's finished out and they're using the garage as an office. And then, once they complete the use of that, then they will apply for a certificate of occupancy for residential living and will do an inspection and make sure everything's ready for residence instead of a commercial use. So, what you're doing is limiting commercial use in that residential subdivision within a model home during that time of intense development.
Is there a timeline, timeline set on that for how long you can utilize that as a office?
The way this is fashioned, there is not. It's just when they get to that 90 percent demarcation line.
Something has to happen.
You know, the, at some point, you know, we don't know when that's going to be, but you can't have a booming economy forever. You've got to have an adjustment and at some point, that, you know, the fewer sales homes they have tied up and not being sold is to their benefit. So, the quicker they sell them, the better off they are.
Yeah, it's on their inventory books. They're paying taxes on it.
Yeah.
That's true.
So, they want to flip those as quickly as possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
So, it sounds like this is a starting point. We can always come back and revise this.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's a good point.
You know, this is really designed for a really large subdivision where you've got hundreds of acres and multiple.
Well, and I've seen them in the metroplexes wherever they have them and they got four or five different styles of homes and they want to show them off, they want to showcase them, so they'll have them where people can walk around and look at the different floor plans and there's nobody in there, I mean, they just walk around and see them. I mean, they just walk around and see them.
Or you may have one more than, more than one custom home builder.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know, to Chris's point, it would be somewhat concerning if you have a twelve lot subdivision and you allow six commercial sales offices there. You're taking it.
It's a bad business plan.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of really not what the land use allocation is for it.
No, I think you did a good job carving that out and like Councilman Mobley said, you know, there's opportunity to go in there if we see something that gets created there that we can come back and amend it or. Counsel, any more questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance?
So moved.
Oh, wow, I got a motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Rodriguez. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in an open session, that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five five one oh seven one, consultation with the attorney pending on contemplated litigation, and section five five one oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now going to executive session. It was now reconvened in the open session. There was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, or is there any more items you'd like to discuss?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to work with the city attorney to form an agreement with Aquametrics dealing with discounts in the future for meters and support.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Yeah, all of them. Just pick Greg Corrigan out there. So we got a motion and a second. Counsel, any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll turn that over to the city manager. Counsel, any more discussion or any items you'd like to discuss? Hearing none, entertain a motion that the council, oh, I'm sorry, the council is now adjourned.